I'll give one, two, three seconds. This is a call to order. This is a meeting of the Hampden Board of Selectmen, July 13th, 2020, conducted over Zoom as directed by the Governor Baker in the March 2020 emergency declaration. You'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. We would just stand one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Is, is anyone recording other than us? Raise your hand. Well, virtually raise your hand. Seeing none, first item of business is meeting minutes. We get the copy of the June 22nd minutes.
I could suggest one change.
Which was?
Oh, the town report. I was suggesting the town report to actually reestablish a town report committee.
Okay. And I think that. Any other corrections or amendments to it? Motion to approve the minutes? All in favor? With us is Dr. Beltran. And also in the audience is Town Accountant. Doctor, where can Dr. Beltran?
He moves over two seats who'd be in camera view.
Yeah.
Two seats.
I'll get this way. Okay. So we're talking about the ambulance contract.
Okay.
You're on there. Yep.
I, everyone, oh, I can unmute. I think everyone is unmuted. Some of them have muted themselves.
Okay.
I've unmuted everyone.
Okay, everyone's unmuted, but I would ask everyone to try not to make any comments without being recognized or keep your dog outside or whatever, children in the other room. So the question, so I guess, Bob, you wanna word?
By way of background, the Board of Selectmen signed a contract with Action Ambulance to begin service on July 1st, which they did. Subsequent to that, there has been some extended discussion. Maybe a little conflict between Action and representatives of our fire department over first response. And I guess it's clear that if there's an advanced life support requirement, that Action will respond. There was some disagreement over whether or not Action or our fire department, which operates a day shift and has a used ambulance, which they purchased about a month ago. They were maintaining that if there's a BLS call during the day shift only, that they would be the responder. I think that's, that's where we are at this point, although last week the Selectmen made it clear that we have a contract with Action Ambulance to supply services, BLS and ALS, and be the first responder on that. And this other situation has not been agreed to or worked out.
What's the process?
Oh, I mean, honestly, it sounds like there needs to be some communication between the various entities and work that out. I mean, first of all, I think it's great that you've been able to move forward and get a contract, whether it's in-house or out. It sounds like you've got an action on board to get ALS, which is important. That's an important element and especially trying to address some of the response times we've been seeing with the previous vendors. So congratulations on that. If that's a big deal, because that really is important. I think the response times, the longest we were seeing was 40 minutes sometimes on an ALS call. So that's a step forward regarding the BLS versus ALS response.
Can I stop you for just a minute?
Sure.
Could you, could you tell us what your title is, what your area of responsibility is, like what your authority is and why you were, why you are even before us? Because the public may not know your history.
Well, someone reached out to me. That's how I got here. But yeah, so my name is Gerald Beltran. I'm actually a board certified emergency medicine and EMS physician and have, I'm the medical director for many of the services in the area through Bay State Hall.
So every service needs a medical director, is that the other?
So they do need an affiliate hospital medical director. That is correct.
And you've been, you've been serving as such for the county Hampden through the police department for quite a while.
So I have been working with the fire departments and also actually I work with Action as well. So I work with several of the entities involved and I have done some stuff with the police department as well locally.
And as the medical director, what authority does that give you? Do you just guide them or, you know, look at what they're doing or?
No, I mean, great question. So an affiliate hospital medical director has a responsibility for clinical care of patients, which affects operations. So our role is to ensure the safety of our patients and the best possible care for patients. And if there are problems, to help identify and resolve those. I look at my role as often within the healthcare system is integrating both the hospital and out of hospital environments together, because often everybody's siloed, as you probably have learned. Everybody's siloed in their own area, but they all touch the same patients. So police are touching the patients, EMS is touching the patients, EMD, emergency medical dispatch is touching the patients, as well as the hospital. So my job is to kind of roll it all together and get everybody working together and communicating more freely with each other.
So you're more advisory and trying to, and trying to get people to work together to try to come up with a solution to a problem that you may have identified or naming of that.
Advisory somewhat, but there's also responsibility, because I can basically terminate relationships in case of a provider that may not be performing or is egregious or at risk to the public. I have the authority to basically suspend their authorization of practice.
Okay, and so you suspend it and then it goes to the state and the state does it officially or?
No.
What happens after suspension?
So there's two. I don't know if you want to get into this, but.
No, well, I just have curiosity.
Yeah, so there's two. There's licensure and there's authorization of practice. Both have to be in place for the provider to be able to function at whatever level. Often the medical directors will suspend someone's authorization down a level or several levels or revoke it completely, while the state may do something in parallel, similar or different. So they are two separate entities when that's, we get to the negative side of that.
I'll be quiet.
No, no, absolutely. I have to answer any questions. So it sounds like there's been some forward movement on that and I was aware of some discussions that occurred regarding dispatch, BLS versus ALS, and I think that's where some of the communication was not clear. And the typical system in the national practice is to use your EMD, your emergency medical dispatch, to send the appropriate level of service to the appropriate patient. The EMD that we utilize here, which is, we use something called priority dispatch. It's probably one of the biggest products in the nation right now and is often used to differentiate when is ALS needed and when is BLS. There are millions and millions of calls that have been used as back data on this to validate what the calls are other being dispatched. So in this case, it sounds like there's been some talk about sending ALS to everything. And I mean, that may make sense up to a point, but you're going to get multiple calls. So you really want to hang on to that ALS unit for when you need it, someone has chest pain, heart attack, something else along those lines. So that's something that at a high level as a medical director, that is something we would typically see is what we call tiered response and sending the appropriate unit to the appropriate call. So that's where I think some of the communication challenges came out. And I think someone said within contract, and I've never seen the contract, so I have no idea what it is, that it was always going to be ALS. And I'm not sure that that is probably ideal for the system. But again, there's probably needs to be conversation on if it's BLS, what BLS, how's that done? And how does that integrate? How does Hampden Fire integrate with Action Ambulance and how's Action Ambulance integrate with that? And how does EMD integrate with that?
So there's a bit of a flow chart to it is what you're saying. Yes, no, yes, no. And then you figure out what the appropriate response is based on answering.
Yeah, algorithm. So we use, we call it an algorithm. And so, you know, 26 is this general sick person. You get down to there, that could be BLS, ALS. I believe at nine, and I'm doing this memory, I may be rusty, that's cardiac arrest or chest pain. I can't remember which. So based on that determinants and the questioning that gets done, like you're pointing out, that brings you down that decision tree or algorithm to which kind of unit you're probably going to need.
Not after the question. In connection with this, at one point, Action pointed out or said that about 20% of the calls are in error because the person needing the service does not describe their condition accurately or effectively. And so what their, their comment was, sometimes you're going to send a BLS ambulance in a situation that when they arrive, they find an ALS ambulance is required.
Sure. And whether, and I don't want to put it just on the patient, person calling or just on the dispatcher. Sometimes the communication's not there and under stress, people don't always provide information. Sometimes they just hang up. So that is one of the realities of dealing. If you've ever had the unfortunate of having to listen to some of these tapes, you can see where the dispatcher's trying to get information, but the person understandably is very concerned and is having trouble hearing. So that does happen and I don't know the exact percentage, but it could be overcalled and it could be undercalled, go either way.
So the, there's no problem with sending an ALS every time though?
Well, you could send it, but then what if that ALS unit is tied up on a chest pain call that just came out? You're sending like was just mentioned, the BLS to someone that really could probably use the ALS versus this person that may have ankle pain that may have been in better utilization of your BLS service. So again, the tiered response is to get the right unit, the right level of training to the right call.
So if I'm to understand, so the chief tells me that they have a class two ambulance.
Okay, which chief? The fire?
Fire chief. The fire chief tells me they have a class two ambulance. And in their proposal that they wrote for their draft agreement or whatever you want to call it, they said class three ambulance. I said, I don't believe there's such a thing in Massachusetts as a class three ambulance. It's a one, two, four and five. One, two and five being ground ambulance, four being air ambulance. And he said, no, what they're talking about was the body type of the ambulance. And then in fact, they had a class.
Yeah, there is that. So.
So the body types are one, two, three, and maybe four. I don't know.
Yeah, you seem to get into all that.
So that's the body type. The classes are one, two, five for ground ambulance. So he said that what they have is a class two ambulance. The regulations say that a class two ambulance is not to be. Class two ambulance. So that's someone that's, that's gotta get, that's disabled, has to have a trip to the doctors or something. That's a class two, can take that person.
So yeah, you do have different licensure and that would be something like an interfacility transfer.
Right. And then it says, then it says, regulations, the CMR says, "Class two ambulances shall not be dispatched to the scene of an emergency, except as a backup for a class one ambulance." So the question being, the fire department wanted to be the primary responder on all BLS calls, but it would seem that the regulations say if they have a class two ambulance, they can't be the primary responder.
So, well, it would, and I don't, I'm not, I don't have the information in front of me as far as what license should they apply for or in the process of. But obviously if they've, you know, if they're a class one, they can do it.
They can do it.
You know, that kind of stuff. And again, I'm not partying to all that.
Okay. So I'm just, so I'm just, by the regulations, they, they would not be able to answer any emergency call. The, the actual have to do that. They could be backed up. If, and it says if, if the class one is demonstrably not available, they can go to emergency call. That could be the backup. And also there's a list of backups that it says that class one could be backed up by a two and a second backup would be a two or a five, you know, depending how big the emergency is, how many calls you get.
And we have. So have you verified with the fire department that they've got a class two application?
Well, the chief, the chief told me he has a class two, so I assume, I assume he knows what he has for equipment.
So when they currently go out on the call, the police show up, fire car shows up, what is that being dispatched as? You know, when the, the people go out from the station responding to the emergency.
So you're saying within the town of Hampden, when we're dispatched?
Before the, before the ambulance was getting there, we're sending out, so the police are responding in the fly car.
Yeah, so it classifieds, so classified vehicle, I think is what the town has. So, yeah, so we would get on scene, law enforcement would get on the scene first, update hopefully fire what's going on. Fire would then show up. Care would be started by law enforcement or the police officers, continued by Hampden Fire once they got there. And then once the transporting agency arrived, they then would take it from there as well. And so everybody, especially like the code, I remember we had like five or six individuals there from different agencies, fire, police, and in this case it was world AMR.
So the fly car represents a classified.
Yeah, typically those are licenses classified.
I, I have an interest in why you would get involved in a discussion that the fire department initiated with a company that we have a contract with. And why, first I have an issue with why they would do it, but then I have an issue with why you would do it. I mean, I could see why you might review the contract once it, once they've been presented to the board, but you really know more about the whole deal than we did or than, than Mr. Markle did or whoever. So I think the process is not appropriate.
Well, I can't answer the appropriateness. I was asked to attend the meeting where several agencies were talking about the dispatch. It's absolutely under my purview. And so it's to make sure, we want to make sure that the system's set up to work best for our patients. And that's really what it comes down to. So I went in, they think we had a discussion and it would sound like it was a candid discussion. And it sounds like some innovation, valve jambs were opened up.
Originally part of the discussion was when we initially looked at the contract, the, the police department was going to be the override, basically over authority for all this.
I can't answer that.
I'm just saying, and then, and then late in the process, it was delegated to the fire department. So that may be why you came in late and saw some confusion as well. If everybody wasn't on board with the original process. Heck, even our board saw the location of the fire ambulance changing down at the last minute. These are all things with a new thing for us, things are going to come up. This is a huge process for the county Hampden. We've been with AMR for, in fact, on, you have to say 10, 15 years, probably.
I have no idea.
When the response from out of town and now they have something in town. This is new ground for us. There's always going to be a couple of hiccups.
Well, absolutely. Anytime you have anything change, any cultural change, because part of this is cultural too, it's going to be, it's a dynamic situation where you have to adapt to things that come up. Like you said, whether it's regulatory, whether it's operational. Maybe you got something where a building can't work and so you have to switch it. I mean, those are all things that are a reality and have happened.
I think we're fortunate that you're here to guide us on the regulation part. It came up last week that our town attorney looked over the contract, but there are things that honestly a legal attorney may not be aware in terms of fire code or regulations from the state. Don has done quite a good research now on the CMR applications.
He's an expert now.
Spent 20 years really.
So, but, but it is also an operational thing. And you're hitting upon the different facets. You've got your regulatory, you've got your political, you've got your operational. All those need to come together to work efficiently in a system. And this is one of the things that I think we're.
So operationally, operationally, if we have an ALS ambulance and we have a contract with them to be the primary responder under our, is that our zone plan? I don't have a zone.
You don't have a service.
Same, right. Zone service plan. That's our primary sponsor. The fire department tells us they have a class two ambulance. So they're prohibited by regulation from responding unless the ALS ambulance is not available or demonstrably not available.
Yeah, I mean, the.
So when it's this, so when a 911 call gets it to the police department, they're to call Action. If Action says we're at another call, then they can call the fire department.
It's, it's how the system is configured. It's really what the town, the vendor and the fire department need to come together.
But the, but the call comes in and I, I had a guy in my, fixing my trimmody today. He gets struck by lightning, falls off onto the ground.
That's not true.
And I just told him, I'm like, until we get this figured out, you're going over. So he falls to the ground. I call, he says I'm okay, but I call the fire department, the police department, 911. The ALS is, they're going to tell them ALS, they actually got to respond.
Well, it depends, because again, you're using EMD, you've got a dispatch center.
Yeah, but they have a, they have a class two ambulance, so they can't respond according to the regulation.
Then you would go down to who else is BLS, who else would be called? So is that going to be another fire department?
But if they're, if the action's available, they should respond. They're five, they're two minutes away.
Well, sure. You want to get the closest, you know, that can handle that. But again, I, you know, I'm going to let you and the fire department figure out what class license they applied for. Because I, they're not going to be planning to do interfacility transfers.
Do we, do we need a, do we need a service plan, zone plan, or is that?
So ideally each community would have its own service zone plan and visit that on a regular recurring basis to make sure it's meeting the community's needs.
Okay. Under the, under the, the zone plan, the, I think it's chapter 111C, 10C, it says that the jurisdiction, which is us, acting as Board of Selectmen, has the authority to pick the primary responder.
I mean, you, you can absolutely choose whoever you want, whether it's. So that's not unreasonable. Again, but I would caution you just to make sure you follow the standard practice, which is to use your EMD and get the right asset to the right call.
MOU, you touched on that. Is that a standard practice, community surrounding communities, that you always enter into mutual aid?
Yeah, absolutely. Police, fire are always willing to do that, because especially with fires, nobody has 100 guys ready. So even the city of Springfield has called for mutual aid several times.
Who typically, who typically, and this has come up recently, who typically reaches out and sets these up?
Usually it's.
Department chair?
Well, usually it's the chief. So for instance, the commissioner in Springfield has made the MOUs with some of the local fire chiefs and that's how they set that up.
So they negotiated, but then who, are they just signing signature or does the Board of Selectmen sign that?
I have not been part of that, but usually from what I recall, I think it's usually through the commissioner or the chief. But again, I can't answer that. I'd have to look.
It was changed in Hampden and I would, because I was talking to one of the Selectmen from 2007 and he said the Selectmen used to sign up. So I'm just wondering. It may have been changed for three or four years. I don't know, or five years. I have no idea. But I just, I think that's, that's an interesting thing. And I think one of the, one of the reasons the Selectmen might want to sign is just to be in the loop for knowledge, that you know who you have agreements with, you know, so if I bump into somebody, they say, well, I live there, I don't know, why aren't they coming? Whatever, you know. So based on everything you've said, it seems to me that if we didn't have a BLS ambulance, we wouldn't have this problem.
Well, I, I think.
Is that not true?
Well, actually you probably have a bigger problem, because if you have one ambulance here and you get several calls, you're going to be calling other communities in to back you up, which is some of the problem that I think EMR had some opportunities, because they used to try to get folks here and when they couldn't, they would reach out to some of the surrounding communities.
And having other folks come in is a problem because they're farther away or because?
You're taking away from that other community and then it becomes a round robin.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, exactly.
Although Action, our contract says that if they're transporting someone, they have to bring another ambulance in.
That's right.
Right.
I, I had a call from the president of the company today. He wanted to send a copy of an application that he has to put in. And I said to him, I brought up this particular subject. If your ALS ambulance is in service, what happens? He said, we roll, as soon as that happens, we roll another truck out of Springfield. And.
What level?
BLS or ALS.
Okay, so it could be ALS or BLS, okay.
It all depends on circumstances.
Okay.
As soon as their ambulance departs, the barn, they make the effort to bring another ambulance to replace it, so.
Based on availability.
Yeah.
Sure. And also MOUs, because again, Action is in this area, they may get called the East Long Meadow. They may get called to other communities may have needs, so whether, you know, city Springfield is, fire, whatever it is. So I think those MOUs, going back to your point, are important to be in place, because not every community is able to support its volume of calls. And I've been seeing multiple medical calls occur in this community, probably within five minutes of each other. We actually split up and went to separate calls. I've seen it happen in East Long Meadow, Wilbraham, I mean, Long Meadow, so it happens. And it usually, I hate to say it, but when it usually rains, it pours.
Well, that's a reason why you see East Long Meadow adding an ambulance to their fleet, Wilbraham adding an ambulance, because based on call volume, they need that coverage.
Right.
So for whatever reason, you have a multi-car action and one ambulance isn't going to cut it.
No, and that's, that's a good point. You're going to have situations that occur in town where you're going to need multiple. You have four injured, severely injured people. One ambulance is not going to be able to cover it, so you're going to need your ALS, BLS in the communities, the surrounding communities to assist.
One of the other concerns that I have is whenever you get, whenever, my experience is whenever you get involved with the state, they sort of take over the leadership role of how you're going to operate, okay, to a degree, okay? I, I guess it's happened in the schools, through the Department of Education, it happens in conservation, lots of areas. Would they ever have to come in and tell us the kinds of service we need, the kinds of? Of course, you're, we're going to have to have you involved anyways, but I'm just wondering what the repercussions are going to be down the road. Could you come in and say that ambulance is not good enough? You have to get a new ambulance or whatever, the, you know, I mean, you know, I know you have certification.
So, yeah, now I'm not clear if you're asking me or the state. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I want to know what your relationship is with the state and if the state can do that.
So can the state do it? Absolutely. They can shut places down. That's, that's something they have done.
And they can do that by saying, in essence, by saying you have to get a new ambulance, right? Or, or this ambulance won't do the job or something. They don't give you a solution.
They don't just do it willy nilly. They usually give warning and then they follow up. In the next year, the same problem's occurring, or they're getting repeated egregious problems, where it's putting people's lives, the state will step in, because they're not going to let people die. Other than that, they usually try to give multiple notifications and warnings, because they don't have the time to be cluttering and, you know, picking on people.
Okay.
They literally just deal with.
And then your affiliations with the hospital.
So I'm the, I'm the affiliate hospital medical director.
Okay, so you don't have anything to do with that. That's.
Well, I mean.
I mean, except information and.
Well, I, I have liability, because I'm supporting the communities that I serve. I'm liable if they do not do good, good patient care. So again, going back to some of this thing, when we're talking about the right asset to the right place, that's coming back on all of us, because the responsibility for ensuring good patient care. And so the standard practice, going back to what is the national practice, that is something that, you know, standardized, not everybody does it. And so I'm not going to tell you everybody does, but that's, you know, talking about gazelles. You want to be in the pack, you don't want to be in the front, the lions will pick you off there, they'll pick you in the back too. You want to be following what most people do, and that's usually what we try to do is adhere to something along those lines.
And you have that same responsibility, whether it's Action or whether it's the Hampden fire department.
Whichever entity.
We deal with both of those.
I have to support both and I have to ensure that they're doing good patient.
Someone got a question?
I do have a question.
Robin.
I have a question. Hi, I'm Dr. Beltran. You had said when a 911 call comes in, the first responder would be the police and the second one is the fire department and the third one is an ambulance. Is that normal on, in other towns of our size? Or I would think that if you have a severe case, you call the ambulance first before the fire department. When someone's critically, you don't wait for the fire department to get there to make a decision, you need an ALS ambulance.
Well, so that is automatic, that's the dispatch center. They will have already sent ALS, but in the meantime, you want to get police and fire there as quickly as possible to render care. So it's not waiting, there is no waiting. Literally the dispatch gets the call and starts dispatching units. Police get immediately notified, because we're on duty. If a fire's on duty, they then also get the call. If not, they tone out the fire department, while at the same time, they're calling, whether it's AMR, Action or whomever, and letting them know there's a call rolling. So in our current environment, all three may be rolling and it may be appropriate. Once they find that they get on scene, oh, we don't need all these. The police are going to hang out just to make sure everybody's safe. If they're not needed, they'll leave. Same with fire and, you know, same with EMS, if a person doesn't want to go.
Well, and you're, you're aware that we have an opportunity for. Well, and you're you're aware that um we have an opportunity for um Action, the number of calls that they respond to will actually decrease the cost of the town, and it could actually become a zero um cost for our ALS ambulance service. So I would personally would rather have an ALS response, we all, we're a town of less than of five thousand people, we're not East Long Meadow, we're not Wilbraham, we're five thousand people. And we have an opportunity here, we have a contract with an ALS ambulance, and it could potentially be at zero cost to the town. So I think that's an important, I, an important point to keep in mind.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, from my perspective, my job is to ensure good patient care, what the town wants to fiscally may not coincide with what I wanna do, but my role is to provide that information to the town and to the agency. So I appreciate what you're saying, but again, I I would wanna make sure that patients are managed as best as possible.
I'd rather respond with an ALS than a BLS, and and they will send a BLS backup, so there will be one available if the ALS is tied up.
Correct.
As you guys had mentioned, thank you.
All right, thank you, doctor.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Move on to the next item or any other discussion on this.
Well, where do we stand on it?
Well, I'd like to, I would really encourage maybe Bob to work with Jeff and Dr. Beltran, who's a wealth of knowledge, to really end rock as well. Develop this flow chart, it seems like, Don, you may have hit a noise, if there's a problem with communication, let's work on the communication. Need us the micromanage, bring it back to us, but we don't need to be here, put the ground, but we can look at the ground.
To me, this is more than a problem with communication. I mean, this is, we have a contract, one of our departments goes out and tries to renegotiate the contract.
A contract you saw a week before he got the job, and he didn't have that job up until June twenty.
I don't, it isn't the timing, it's the it's the idea that if I was working for you, and you had given me a contract to implement, I wouldn't go to the company and say, I'd like to renegotiate this with you. I don't care if I've been working for you a day, five days, fifty years, it would, it just would be inappropriate, it seems to me, and it's poor judgment, and I don't, I just don't think it's good, and I think that we have muddied the water with saying who's gonna be where, and and we're gonna be going like this forever, unless we say, where is the responsibility, you know, clear and succinct, and it, you know, I just don't see, um I don't see how it's in Hampden's best interest to to not do something significant about this whole situation.
Well, I think you had Dr. Beltran made a good point, that you don't wanna always roll out the ALS. First off, from a billing standpoint, I'm gonna pay for, as a in the ALS league subtoe, and we're gonna pay for the twenty-five-hundred-dollar ambulance ride for something that wasn't needed. That's what the EMD, the dispatch, and they use their algorithm to figure out the appropriate response. Wealth of knowledge, I think he had a good explanation for that. I think you pointed out last week, good point, that word contract, the word contract should never have been in that thing right there. There was clearly a memo of understanding, whatever, and that really just set the whole tone incorrectly. And I think there was a a good comment that shouldn't use that boilerplate, and we apologize for that. This is strictly a memo of understanding, and we have the detail, and we have the detail, who's in charge and how it responds.
So I have no problem with memos of understanding, I have no problem with mutual aid agreements, we're in like that. The problem I have is that our contract says that they that action will roll every single time. If it's true that the, and the fire department has a class two ambulance, then they're precluded from going on any calls unless the action ambulance is not available. So the point of putting that they were gonna cover, they were gonna do it, all BLS calls, eight to four, and whatever their their thing is. They can't do it, because they have a class two ambulance, and the regulations clearly preclude that, they could only be backed up. So the situation, it might.
I think you make a good point, look, we can debate the merits of it, but the reality is, the rule says you can't.
Yeah, so so we are where we are. So Action rolls on everything, and now we have to make sure the dispatchers and the police department know that.
And that brings up the other situation over the weekend, that would make sure dispatch understands.
Yeah, I don't think it was dispatch, but the problem, over the weekend, the 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 nursing home is a private entity, and they can call whoever they want. And I think probably what happened was, they probably have AMR as their as their non-emergent transport person, right, unspeed by, push the button, call them. AMR said, we can't do it, they counted East Long Meadow, East Long Meadow said, they can't do it. They counted, someone called, counted Wilbraham, they came and transferred the person, in the meantime, we got an ALS ambulance a hundred and fifty feet from their front door.
So it wasn't typical transport or emergency, we didn't know.
Yeah, I understand it was a low, low oxygen level.
I think, however, that you're missing the point in that the fire department is taking on um a direction that they think they are in charge. They're having a meeting tonight, I understand, to train people at midnight on the ambulance. They just keep going, and I think what is going to happen is that we will be having, this problem will resurface again and again and again, unless we take the authority that we have and have a dialogue with them about appropriate actions. And, um, you know, I had asked last week that we go into executive session to discuss this under our, uh, article one, under the executive session, under personnel. I would ask the same thing again, I think that there has to be a frank and honest discussion of performance and of, um, you know, of I don't professionalism, or whatever you wanna call it, I don't think that's what you wanna call it, but it is, it is, you cannot allow allow people to go off on their own. The 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 parking wreck could go off and buy basketballs, you know, or do whatever, we had to make a contract with the Celtics or something, I don't know what they could do. But it seems to me that we have a significant issue, this is not, to me, this is not a minor issue, it really isn't.
Hi, this is Ed Pullen, could I make a comment? Um, first of all, the agreement that was presented to Action, whenever these agreements go from town to town, they're drafts, and the other entity at this point was Action. They would like make notes or comments on it, and then we would correct it, it's like a negotiation agreement until both parties are satisfied with that. So what you saw was just a draft, it wasn't us trying to manipulate any contracts, so I wanna make that clear right away. And if we were to be just backup action at some point, if they weren't around as a last resort, we'd be very happy with that, if you can find a legal way to do it.
I think Don already found that, if they're not available, class two can back up.
Is is the ambulance that we have class two?
Is class two, but it's the same identical ambulance that.
You can be back up when ALS is not available.
Okay, good.
I think the other point that was made certainly last week is that there are several, three kinds of decisions that are taken in town government. Some are taken by department heads under their authority, usually that's has relates to budgeted items. Uh, some are taken by the town administrator, usually in conjunction with the department head, and the significant decisions of town are made by the elected. And significant decisions like, we're going to be negotiating um regional arrangements, we're going to be negotiating agreements with the ambulance company, those kinds of things need to be brought to the selectmen, and at least keep them informed as to what's going on. You know, there's not a democratic system that you don't have the elected people making the significant decision.
I would, I would like to also mention that none of these forms were signed by either party, they were not legal binding issues, again, they were just rough drafts going back and forth.
Okay.
And we did put the fire chief in charge of ambulance, so the question is, when were we gonna be brought into the loop? And that's like, I think back to Mary Ellen's point, we need to be either more on top, Bob more on top, let's keep the group together, if you will. And let's no, no one party go off on their own without making sure everybody's on board.
But but the point to me is, we are not going off board, they are going off.
No, they're not.
Bob hasn't gone off board.
We put the fire chief in charge of ambulance, this board voted, even, so he said, fine, I'll reach out to the ambulance company, and let's talk about who does what and whatever. A draft was done, how was that wrong? We put, just your example, Parker Ruckus in charge of the sports program.
But but I think, I think that, I think that when he went and did the purchase, he found an ambulance that he could purchase, you thought it was showing initiative. I thought it was insubordination, we had had a discussion about what we would use for ambulance service, and we did not accept the fire department's proposal. So then he goes out, gets the thing, and then gets what he wanted, he did the same, he's trying to do the same thing with this contract. I have no problem with mutual aid, I think we should have mutual aid agreements, I think they're fabulous. I really have no problem with with your solution, I think it's a fine solution, I have a problem with process. And if you allow people to go around you, and you don't exercise your authority, then that will just continue and grow bigger and bigger and bigger. The police will do it, the other, other people will do it, I mean, I just, I I know I don't have the votes to to mandate this, but.
But but I do have an issue with the he, the he, the he, and I'm gonna.
Chief.
I'm gonna say the chief. Chief is, are you acting on your own, or use your department's support when you're doing now?
And we have the department's support, but I I would caution to say that it was a board, approved board meeting to go out and purchase this ambulance. I did not do it to upset anyone, I really had the well-being of the town in mind. And like I said, it's it it's here to be used in any way in incapacity that it can be, that the board feels fit.
Does the town have any supervision over either the police or the fire department? Do we have any role in that? And then, and then, if we have that role, what is the role relative to the fire department? Do we get, do we authorize purchases, do we, you know, see that they have an evaluation system, do we, you know, what what is our, what is our area of responsibility?
We've not delegated, they brought it to us in the past, I've worked with, gosh, four different fire chiefs in my my tenure. And they've always come to us in a pretty friendly manner and said, hey, this is what we want to do. And the training program was established, when Jeff comes to us and says he wants to do more training for the people. Do we micromanage what they do? No, we're aware of it. Do we sign off on, okay, yes, Jeff, only seventeen bullets this year, you're gonna have to like really be sure. And he's never gone over that amount, I will say. There does need to be open communication, you're right about that, and I think there's an opportunity here, this is new ground for everybody, for all. We've had a great run with AMR, a zero cost to the town, and now that we're spending, as you said, real money and all our money, we all need to be on top of the game, but we can do it in a positive and.
I have a question, please.
Nancy, yes.
Yes, um, when Mary Ellen mentioned she spoke with a selectman from two thousand and seven, and that the selectmen signed the mutual aid agreements then. In two thousand and seventeen, when the fire department applied for whatever that license is called because that's when the paramedics started. So were new mutual aid agreements written in two thousand and seventeen? I I just like clarification on that.
We have to ask the old man on that one.
I would imagine he established them at that point. And I don't know, mutual aid agreements, are they not annually, or once you have one?
We we have, uh, what we have is a Hampden County mutual aid agreement for fire, our BLS fly car is not in a mutual aid agreement at all.
So just the, but I mean, when you have a mutual aid agreement, for instance, the fire with East Long Meadow, et cetera, is that set up once, and then it's just?
Yes, yes, through the Hampden County Association.
Any chance, uh, what would be helpful, if you get a list of all the different ones you have and and provide them to Bob, or you've got this one in East Long Meadow, this one in Monson, this one with Jeff, whatever.
Yeah, again, it's a, it's like a blanket coverage for the Hampden County, but yeah, we'll we'll come up with what we have, absolutely.
Okay, to bring this to closure, could we at the very least have Mr. Markle send a letter to the fire department outlining what areas should be brought before the board? So that we have clarity, so we hear the thing before it's voted, or before it's before it's decided, or whatever, I mean, just, he can say whatever he wants to say, whatever he thinks is good procedure for the relationship to build, to be built. I don't wanna have bad relationships with anybody, but I do want to have good, I like, I'm a big process person, and I think that people have, you have to be clear as to what you expect, if you if you wanna get it out of people. So I would suggest that we do that. And if I need a motion, I'll make a motion.
I think, if I can speak, uh, obviously, Bob being the town administrator should always have a relationship with department heads.
I could have said from you, I should have said from him.
Well, I'm saying.
It should come from the town administrator.
I'm saying, you know, I think Bob is town administrator, or the town administrator, who maybe should always have a relationship dialogue with different department heads, he should be calling Jeff, he'll call Becky, he'll call, you know, whichever, Wendell. Tough at this point to define exactly what you're requesting for, and say, are we micromanaging, or are we just running the department? And I think that's a cautionary thing, we don't need Bob going over and saying, hey, chief, you know, boy, I'm not happy with the status of the squadron, or something like that. I encourage, as you said, let's have Bob draft something, basically, these are things I think should be reviewed, these are things we're okay with you doing and bring it back to us. If he wants to reach out to chief in Wilbraham, the chief in East Long Meadow, hey, what do you, what do you handle on your own, what do you have to, what do you have to kick up the ladder? That'd be great, you know, good example.
I mean, I I actually think that.
You could ask the guy on that.
In general, in general, written agreements of all kinds, whether it be with another municipality, whether it be within the organization, written agreements. Town administrators should be informed and should bring most of them, uh, if not all of them, to the board's select.
And and they should kept on file here, they can have.
But again, same thing as that FYI or approval, I'd like you to research that with other communities and see what they require. If I'm gonna hear four or five or like. For instance, I think he emailed us that, hey, I've got this one coming up with, was he from or Wilbraham?
Wilbraham.
Should I go ahead and sign it?
Some of the confusion has extends from the fact that for most of the last six months, it's been the police chief who has been, uh, you know, the main person, uh, interacting with the East Long Meadow, interacting with West Palm and and the like. Uh, and then with the new agreement, we flipped it over to the department.
That that brings another question to mind, if we have the fire chief being the one that is going to monitor Action's response time and the appropriateness of that time, isn't that a conflict of interest? And shouldn't it go back to the police? Because one fire department investigate another fire department, or looking through, he can fine up to five hundred dollars instead of the contract?
Well, I don't know about that, if you want, why don't we ask Dr. Beltran?
Well, we have.
Plenty of different departments.
I don't know.
Well, we have the, we have the contract that we can have an ambulance committee that meets four times a year and discuss those issues, so I could, the ambulance committee could do it. That's hard data, too.
Hello?
Yes.
So most fi, most towns, the fire chief is the emergency management overseer, so that that's not a conflict of interest, that's the way most municipalities run. In two thousand and seventeen, when the town of Hampden voted to go to a full-time fire department Monday through Friday, it was under the understanding that they would be building their EMS and their paramedics and the ambulance, which is why they applied for the licensure, in order to help justify having full-time people. So now we're paying taxpayer dollars for a fire department, and this Action ambulance contract came along all of a sudden, because we had been assured for years that we were going to have free ambulance coverage by Vinnie Villamano, he worked close with the the prior ambulance company, and then that all fell apart. Why are we cutting a budget, or potentially cutting a budget, that we already have in place to pay a vendor? Why wasn't that taken into consideration when you negotiated the contract with Action? That we already had EMS on staff with a. That we already had EMS on staff with a fly car Monday through Friday? And then our contract with Action would have been less dollars. There's lack of communication.
We, we, first of all, we didn't cut the, we didn't cut the fire department budget. The fire department. Excuse me?
We're double paying now.
We're paying, we're paying for a fire department and we're paying for a backup ambulance service. We have a contract with Action Ambulance that will provide us ambulance ALS ambulance service. First of all, we didn't have, even if we had the fire department, we didn't have ALS ambulance service. We would have had to buy a new ambulance, would have been a couple hundred thousand dollars to get twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five service. We would have had to put a number of people on, so the the cost would have been considerably greater than three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. We have an opportunity to recoup money depending on the number of calls they get and the number of services they provide. The bids that we got at the time were between nine hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, and this one came in best at three hundred and thirty-three thousand. And like I say, the fire department put in a bid, but it wouldn't have provided us with twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five service. It would have provided us with eight to four. And then people would have been on call and we still wouldn't have had ALS service. And we have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars every, every. All right, we're gonna move on to the next thing. Thank you, everyone, for your attention.
And Don, I'd encourage you maybe to keep the request for an ambulance committee on.
On the agenda so we can get someone appointed. Policy on the use of town vehicles?
I did share, I've got a copy of the one from Warham. I'm gonna take a forward to you, Bob.
Yes, and I think it's very well drawn.
Sometimes, you know, it's a pill new ground or somebody's done all the work for you. You want to share it around with the board and work it over, multiple pages down. It must spend quite a bit of time on it.
It's taking a lot of courage, right?
Well, that's it. And they do it. So I think it's pretty comprehensive if you want to push it over to future.
Okay.
And ours doesn't have to be as elaborate as Warham.
No, but it's easier to cross out parts.
We have something in our.
We have a town vehicle use policy in the manual, okay? And maybe if you wanted to, to compare this to that, the only thing, you had given me five suggestions, which were like that they could, they could keep the vehicle at your house, for the, for the dog, for the.
Dog officer.
Dog officer car. We've had five, six suggestions that I also included in this, but I will, that's, that's page twenty-three probably.
So if you look at this, it's four or five pages. Pretty comprehensive on the kill. So it's easier to cross out parts than the right end.
You know, when you send, when you send your, your town administrator's report, I get the little pictures of the PDF, but I can't open them.
That's exactly what I just.
Yes, we.
I do not have a copy loaded on your.
I do, I do. I got.
Became aware of that this afternoon, and I have a.
Okay.
Yes, doctor.
Do you have a fax machine?
I got one of them.
What I'm going to do is just print out rather than just giving you the icon and you can click it.
In the year, financial transfers. You have the town accountant here? Account away. Sure.
You're a brave person.
How come the town accountant has a mask?
I have a fancy one too. I like.
Don sent me something. It said a town accountant from someplace in Eastern State.
Yes, did you see that? That was awful.
I gotta get notes. I don't know how he did it. I honestly don't know how to do that. You won't make fifty years if you do that. Yeah, that's true, but I don't have fifty left, so I, I'll write you from the Cayman.
He had three different communities. I mean, he must have.
Yeah, that's a lot of it.
Thank goodness.
Usually this time of year, we are going through a list this long. Last year, we were trying to literally find over almost a hundred thousand dollars in overages. One of which, a major one, was unemployment compensation. And every year, we've got a lot, and a lot meaning fifteen, twenty. Some of them are small, some of them big, okay? This year, we got three, not counting Snow and Ice. And they're all very logical. Election expenses, a lot of that was because of yearly voting. The lawn claims, it's always a problem, you know, but it'd be only six hundred dollars this year. And townhouse maintenance, which I think a lot of that chunk was because of that door that went out. The door plus the coop law. Yeah, so I think we're, you know, remarkably, we're, you know.
How much was the lawn claims?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I got, I got printouts for you. I thought the early voting, I was shocked that that was gonna be reimbursed by. Oh, it will be someday because it's a, it's a mandate reimbursement. But how long before we can?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah. But, okay, when they mandate reimbursement, it's a general fund levy. It goes into the general fund. It doesn't go back to the account. Kim, you want to, you want a copy? That's all I got, so you'll have to read me the numbers back. Really, this is. And like I said, it's still gonna lay fifteen grand in the reserve account that wasn't used at all. Yeah, right. How bad was the Snow and Ice overage this year? Fifty, thirty-four, I'm sorry, forty-three, but don't forget, we bought a dump. We bought a, we bought a new, we bought a sander, so we would have been twenty-something if we didn't buy that sand.
Now, what happens with that clip?
That goes on the tax rate for next year. There's a place in the recap sheet that specifically says, I have to report it to the state that it's an overage. They don't hit our free cash for it because it's one of those, that and interest are the only two you can legally overdraw. That will be on the tax rate under a specific item next year. And we've carried over some years as much as a hundred and seventy thousand.
Some bad years.
This year, forty-seven, forty-three. Yeah, so that's gonna bode well. So we basically have to vote a recommendation to ask the advisory to approve a. Right, I'll bring, and I'd, I'd ask you to sign them as well because it's always been a joint thing. This has always been something. But they're meeting on Thursday. Yeah, I, I thought they were coming tonight. No, Don, Dr. Wayne. Okay, so you, if you sign off on it, I'll get them to sign off on it Thursday. Endorse the town accountant's request for transfers to submit to advisory.
No, in favor?
It's always been a joint, usually it's been a joint meeting.
Should we sign? Should we all sign?
Yeah, because I'm gonna have.
All three, all three.
Because I usually only have the chair sign.
Okay.
Because you have the vote on record. Thank you.
Also, I've been trying to keep an eye on unemployment assistance. And we no longer have anyone drawing unemployment. We had two, both were closed out in April.
Yeah, we had a good year. We did. In light of everything, we had a good year. We'll see, by the end of the week, I should have an internal estimate on stabilization because we have to post this warrant tonight. And after that, I can give you a, my guess as to what. We will have some. Won't be as much as we've been used to maybe, but we will have some. One of the reasons is, is that we had two very large motor vehicle excise commitments. It didn't get posted till June thirtieth. Usually those are in, they come in in intervals, okay? February, April, and the like, and then they got thirty days to pay. Well, these commitments, which are almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, they're not due until well into this fiscal year. We'll collect the money, so we'll have a larger number for next year. But we might see our revenues a little bit lower because there's a partial motor vehicle excise levy we're not collecting. Still over your estimate, but not as much of the. Considerably over the estimate, which is always kind of the case. And then when we do set the tax rate in, of course, long before then, we'll be all talking about it, but there'll be a time when you all have to sit down, look at all the numbers, you know, add your signature to it. Believe it or not, on the entire recap, there's only one place that's subjective. And that is estimated revenue. The rest of it is all plugged in based on town meeting vote, what the assessors, what the assessments are, what the state assessments are, what state revenues are, and the like, and we'll, we'll know what that is probably not too long from now. I, I don't expect too, too bad. Even if they hit us for ten percent, that's, that's not that big a deal. I'm sure she, that's nothing. I think five is more low. But then as the year goes on, they're probably. They've done the mid-year ones before, so. Right now, they're.
The town's finances are very strong.
Yeah.
And even if we need it, there's a very substantial overlay surplus.
I think we leave that. Well, that's kind of always been a nice emergency.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting.
Yeah.
It's there.
Yeah, in effect, our overlay surplus exceeds our outstanding revenues. Our extend, I'm sorry, our overlay surplus exceeds our outstanding taxes. Real estate and personal property. That's a pretty good position to be in. I mean, that shows qualified tax collection, qualified assessors and the like. Got a good crew here. We okay?
Good. Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Take your gator and go.
Vacation carryover, town employees and employees under contract.
And no concern about contracts.
Yeah, the contracts, the contracts, the contract. There's no, there's nothing.
Those hours are dollars.
And for the audience, the contracts are with the police chief.
We have contracts with, with the police chief, the dispatchers, the highway employees, the highway superintendent.
Okay, and their contracts stipulate how much vacation time they get and when they're not, when they can use them.
Becky, there can't be Becky. Well, I thought that, I thought these, that if, for Jane and Becky, they probably could be covered under the the COVID because if one's public health and one is providing services for senior citizens, meals and all that stuff.
Here's the, here's the other thing. We talked about this and I think you touched on it before, was that allowing them to carry over their weeks costs the town nothing because they're being paid, they have vacation, it doesn't, we're not paying anything. You're just saying, okay, you get, basically for next year on a one-time only, you have two extra vacation weeks. Make sure you have coverage in your department. And there's no expense in the town because it's just vacation time that they're being paid for anyhow. So for us to allow that one-time exception.
Somebody in the audience made was that they got paid for the day when they work, when they were on furlough or whatever you would call it, working at home, and they're gonna get paid for the day again on vacation. So they're getting two days.
For the day when they were working.
They got paid for the day when they worked it because they didn't take vacation. And now they're getting another day off, which is really like getting paid for that other day without doing anything. Isn't that what Rena's point was?
No, it wasn't.
What was her point?
No, no, but what was that saying? They were sitting at home, not doing anything and getting paid. We're saying, no, they were at home. As Becky said last week, they were home, yes, but still working.
They were still working at home.
Right.
So they, so they had that day.
Right, so they got paid for work. Yeah, I think she was more like, well, what about the people that were sent home and didn't have an opportunity to work and got paid? And that's not, as Becky said before.
Well, we want to be fair and we know that.
I like, yeah, like, okay, we don't do the buyout thing.
We don't, we can't do the buyout.
Well, we do the carryover on a one-time exception because of the.
And used by a certain date, I think would be another thing to say. Used by, you know, depending on how many days they suppose, but you know, used by, like, September, okay, which gives them a couple of months here.
Yeah, anywhere. You still can't.
January first, December first.
Yeah, I mean, when things opened up, I'm just gonna say, I mean, you can barely go out the.
How many, how many days are these, are these involved?
Pretty, pretty minor.
Yeah, we're pretty much got everyone down to, pretty much nothing.
Are we going to?
Eight days.
Eight days is the maximum.
How about the contracted ones, Don?
What?
How about the contracted ones?
The contracted ones, I think they're okay. They're all square.
Also, that's, that's not bad.
All right, so let's.
That's a good solution.
All right, let's get it off the, the motion to.
Motion to allow, because of the emergency, only to allow employees to carry over unused vacation days to be used by the first of December without further action by the board.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Bring that list to Bob to certify.
Oh, in favor? Hi, okay, thank you.
I think that's the big point.
Yes.
Right.
Right. Five days for the year. Does anyone who's got additional days beyond the five days?
I also want to make employees aware that in the future, should any kind of an emergency come up where they have to work at home, they are encouraged to take their days because this will not happen again. So, you know what I mean? So they, because they probably just didn't think of vacation days at home and they didn't think about vacation.
Someone wants to say something?
And there are those who, you know, are, are, are being paid for a day and are working beyond, especially in the beginning of the crisis, working well beyond a day.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Some of that we're covering with COVID money, but not all of it.
I, yes, I am. I, I do have a question. And listen, I never take my vacation days anyway. However, I've worked every day since, and mostly from the office, since this started. On, so, and it's supposed to go through, there's a good chance that we're gonna have another wave on, by December, so I don't.
Oh, I did say the motion was without further action by the board, so I did leave the door open for, you know, wave two.
Okay, never mind, sorry.
Because I mean, there are so many variables right now.
Yes, you can't make a firm play on it.
We're still waiting for phase four in the senior center as well.
Right. We, I. It's just hard when you don't take a day. I mean, I've been, as you guys know, I've been working about fifty hours a week every single day. I'm there at the office. I don't, I don't go home. I forget what my home looks like. It's like, it's hard. It's hard.
It's quite nice.
It's up for sale if you have.
I think the goal of December first is an appropriate goal, but as you said, if second, and you know from health, hopefully, the potential out there, if that happens, it happens and we come back and we re-discuss it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Selectmen's policy procedure manual?
I had a discussion with Mary Ellen earlier. She's going to share something.
This is, this is an overview of what we have said. What I did was, everybody did it a little bit differently. Mr. Marco gave me a annotated, I guess I would call it annotated, what I, booklet. John gave me a sheet that had all these things on my page and whatever. So what I did was I put them on a list. I have two policy manuals, if you need to refer to one to look at the section and see what you want to do. John, John's were rather extensive. Most of them I could just incorporate because it was just a word changing of phraseology, cite the law, you know, that kind of a thing. But I did take three that I'm gonna have to share with you. Okay, so the first thing was, for, for John's, was to change the GBL date. So I did that. That was done on page sixteen. It talks about. Page sixteen?
Oh, we're going three, four?
Yeah, so it only, only, well, I changed it, but I, I want to be sure you like it.
Run page sixteen?
Well, is that, well, you, we don't have to go through them like that.
No, 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 I thought, I love the recap you gave us and this is good and if we can.
Or you can do it on your own even, in our print document.
Print the new sheets and then we'll review again, I think we're pretty good.
We want to bring this to closure.
I go back to the chair's point last week, this is the perfect time for it during the summer when definitely things are a little slower. If you want to print new sheets for us and we insert them.
Yeah, but she changes the presentation.
Hopefully you, uh, did submit those.
What is that?
Yeah, no, I didn't.
Change under authority.
Oh, he, he, he wanted something changed, the date, the date or something. And I had the wrong date because I took it from another document and they had the wrong publication date. Okay, then the other, the second one is, um, under the agenda thing, where it says, department has may request a selectmen and it, it sort of infers that it would have some, there would be some approval by the selectmen is, is stronger, and I watered it down and, and, and it said, it also said that, but I watered it down by saying if there was not room on the agenda, that meaning it would refer to another meeting.
Okay, so I have the summary here.
Yeah.
You have corrected sheets already?
No.
Okay.
No, well, if I said changed, I have already corrected them. But if I didn't say, if I said discussed, I thought there was a need for a discussion. For example, number three is, do we want a consent agenda in, in, in the agenda?
I wonder about that, could I see it? I looked at the agendas in Ludlow, Oberhand.
A lot of places have them. A lot of places use them.
I think it's a good terminology to have in there.
Okay, so I will, um, the, um, the, the, what, what the.
We saw a lot of the school.
Yeah, we did a lot on the school committee. Uh, the names of all appointees and reappointees and the names of all new licenses and permanent applications, but not annual reviews shall be included in the agenda posted in the town's clerk office and on the meeting agenda and should be posted on the town's website. That, that is an example of a consent agenda. You don't have to go through each one of them, okay? So I will just include that, okay? Good. Public records, um, might need to explain, John suggested we might need to have an explanation of it because it's, to make sure that HIPAA, which really should have two Ps, but it doesn't, and, and, and medical things are followed. And it says, personal and medical files of information is what it says.
Right, she even put HIPAA in there.
Okay. So, um, do we want to put in parentheses HIPAA?
Yeah.
Okay, add that. Okay.
Healthcare and.
Okay, so add to healthcare. Discuss new policies, the vehicle use policy.
Probably, probably got something for that.
That was the one we talked about.
That's the one we talked about earlier, so, and all those things are included. So if, if, so you'll get a copy of that when you, when we send the new, the new. Okay, so that's okay, that's accepted. On page 26, I'm not a fan of grant language, and that grant language said, I didn't change that. Grants, but it's really the bottom of page 25, I guess. Announcement of grants awarded should come from the town administrator and all press releases should be authorized by the administrator. That part was, was new. And then, um, uh, it says something about, I think John was saying, announcement without, oh, that we should have no announcement without acknowledgement by the, by the board of selectmen.
Yeah, basically.
Do you want to add that?
Well, basically it's saying the, the grant announcement had to come from us. And I'm saying, no, Becky can announce the grant as long as she has sent a copy of the announcement to the board. And going to be announced that we got this grant and send.
Well, that's what we wanted to say.
That's what I was.
So whether, whether we will.
But why take, why steal that thunder, they worked hard on it.
What do you think, Don? The last paragraph on the other page says, announcement of grants awarded should come from the town administrator and all press releases should be authorized by the, by the administrative announcements and discussion of grants through social media is not allowed. So the issue is, is that okay? Do you want, do you want somebody announcing on social media? Do you want it officially announced by the board, by the town administrator?
If I knew what I would do at one of these meetings, though.
Okay, so, so, so they could submit it to him for approval or?
Well, that's what I'm saying here for me, but, and then it's fine, hey, Becky called Bob, says, I've got this grant, he wanted to get the information about it. He said, that's fantastic, I'll let the board know later and she announces, we got a grant, we worked hard, we're working on this. And we find out about it too.
Yeah.
We, we know ahead of time, so we're not.
Okay, so I'll just rewrite that in the.
The only other thing I want to say on the grants, though, is that it says, prior to beginning the grant application process, the individual or group department should consult the town administrator. I'd like a little wording in there. The reason for that would be so that the grant that they're applying for conforms to what the policy or the plans are of the town. If someone gets a grant to plant, you know, cherry trees and, you know, memorial park, we don't.
Yeah, I think the further concern is that the grant ties you into something later.
Right.
That's the thing where you worry about those grants, okay, yeah, we give you the first two years, but you're now obligated for five more years.
But that's the point, that's the point of review.
Right.
So, so should consult with the town administrator and seek support and approval? Is that what you're saying?
Prior to announcement.
Well, somebody has to sign it anyways on behalf of the town, doesn't that mean the, the selectmen or the, or the?
But we want to make it, we just want to clear, the reason we want to review it is, A, we want it, we want it to be consistent with what we have as a policy or what our plans are, and number two, that we don't want to get tied into something that we're stuck with.
And then they award and announce.
Right, the award and announce, you can do it, right.
To afford or to something consistently with town goals, right? Prior to the, they would see, but I got it.
Hi, hi there, this is Becky. Just, just an FYI, some of the grants are actually announced by the awarding authority. So sometimes it's the state legislature that will do.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll read.
Like Senator Lesser announced our earmark grant, and then Greater Springfield Senior Services will announce the Title III B grant funding. So just FYI that sometimes we don't have control over the announcement.
Okay.
Okay. Number seven is an email, and I took out.
I don't think it should be in here at all.
Take the email out entirely?
I think it's in the personnel policy, the personnel manual anyhow, it should apply to everybody.
Delete it?
Yeah.
Oh. Great, I love it.
That was easy.
You got it right. Page 33 is, uh, human resources, and it's, the number three is written, as written, isn't a guy, isn't a guideline per se, what's number three, a paragraph three, I must say. No, is that right, the right one? No, no, I'm not clear on the intent of the paragraph beginning, any personnel action, that's what he says. So it's the third paragraph.
Yeah, this one here.
Any personnel action.
But that's, that's from the memo that went out back then.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's pertinent now.
I don't think it is here.
Do the.
I think that's, it went out a long time ago.
And then 34 is access to the building, it's 34, where is that? It's on the bottom of 33, it goes on to, and it says, acts, after our access, the building should be allowed only in the company of an employee, elected official, board or commission member. And I would recommend after, adding after member unless authorized by the board of selectmen or town administrator.
Well, I believe there's actually a FOB of policy.
Is there a FOB of policy?
Yes.
No, is it?
Now, you said, hey, can you go to the office and pick up something for me? Technically, then you could give the FOB to somebody, so I can present it and pick it up.
So, so.
You send Bruce down to pick up something, take my FOB and go.
Good luck.
The last time you saw that.
That's the authorization.
Okay, so, so, so where am I putting this?
Just at the end.
Just at the end and say, elected board member or commission member or other is authorized, or, or another is authorized?
Authorized, I have more than one or town minister.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
All right, then he's done.
Now you got Bob.
Okay, now I got Bob. All right, Bob's got. Change selectmen on cover. So we have, we have the names on the cover and we have the town administrator on the cover. Do we want to take this off completely? Or do we want, because as people change, then we want to put the date, except adopted the date. Well, he said it to me.
Oh, no, because it said change.
And then he, that wasn't what he said, that's what I said. What he said was, change selectmen to.
Well. Board.
So the thing is, you can't do that unless, you got to, you got to get it done by the legislature.
Good.
But it is, it's happening, you know, it's happening.
Well, I think we should leave it that way. I don't think we should change it. Okay, so do we want these?
And some are like, and some refuse to do it.
Do you want this stuff on the front, the names and the, and the whatever? Okay, and then I'll, I'll put adopted, the date was adopted. Leave the names on? Okay, okay.
Future boards can pick.
And they can do revise.
Get rid of us. They're going to take our statues down.
Okay, um, where's my other thing from Bob?
Changes their authority, remove MMA.
Oh, he said MMA is not an authority. It's a guide, it's a guidance, or is that what it is?
Oh, yeah, I see. Yeah.
Okay, so MMA's a rule?
That could go to your references page.
It is in the reference page.
Okay, we're taking that off.
MMA is out, okay.
Page nine, delete. This is a.
Page nine, delete the parts that's in parentheses. Here's the statement, the statement is written here.
This is the trouble.
From time to time, then the board may enact policy to foster sound administration through transparency and consistency from that point on to the vote, towards his vote.
Let me see that.
That's the last word. Repealed by a majority vote.
Page nine. This, this is. This is the trouble, this is the trouble when you get a professor involved in these things.
You're not kidding.
What, we're missing that comma? Are you sure?
All right.
What are we doing on that? I can't find, I can't find your notes, I just asked for you, Bob.
It says a delete in parentheses from time to time.
Okay, page five.
Policy.
Page nine. All right, I'll tell you exactly what he said. Policy, board as policymakers is the title. And, is that not correct?
Right.
Okay, and it says, the board of selectmen is the chief policymaking board of the town acting within state and federal law and the town bylaws. From time to time, the board may enact policy to foster administration.
I don't see the parentheses.
Because I have a parentheses on what I wrote here because there's other words, but that's okay. He took out through transparency and consistency, he took all, all the rest of it.
Oh, okay, oh, I'll take, yeah, 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 yeah.
So that's what it's, that's how it reads now, board as policymakers. The board of selectmen are chief policymakers.
Okay, all right.
Is that okay, like?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this is okay.
I see what he's saying.
Page 11. And again, all the other things that he put, which were fabulous, but are all just going to be changed because it's a word choice or it's, he's a capital letter, that kind of stuff. Page 11, policy shall take effect 30 calendar days after adoption. And what this says, said was, um, I don't know what it says.
Take effect, 30, board should be.
Oh, that's what, that's. Why 30 days he put? Why 30 days?
Why 30 days?
Would you like it to be 15 days or would you like it to be two days, two weeks, two months, two years?
I don't think you need to wait 30, I mean, something less than that.
The dedicated board policy shall remain in effect for 30-day calendar days after adoption.
I think 30 days is fine.
30 is fine with you?
Yeah.
Of course, I mean, chief, the chief is on, when we sign the policies, when do they take effect?
Left us. This is so boring. Okay, so should we leave it at 30 days? Okay. Doesn't make a difference, we can change it later. Uh, in 13, add, in addition to serving as recording secretary, the administrative assistant will have other administrative responsibilities assigned by the selectmen and will provide administrative assistance to the town administrator. Okay, that's page 13. And that's just a new, a new.
Yeah, that's okay.
Took out some little words, but, okay, okay. Everybody's okay with that. Page 15, rewrite. And it says, workshop meetings provide, this is, this is the new writing, workshop meetings provide extended focus and discussion of a matter before the board. Workshop meetings address complex issues and are typically held prior to discussion and action at the regular meetings of the board. No formal vote should be taken on any matter under discussion during these meetings.
Fine.
Okay?
Fine.
And then, um, page 30. Revised.
I have a great question, when is your contract up?
How are you? You didn't get a contract, did you?
I have a contract, in a sense, I serve.
Prefer the notice. I'm glad you're the board.
It says until you hire a permanent full-time person or the board decides that my contract is, is concluded or terminated.
So that's, I think that should be an agenda item for, for an agenda, an upcoming agenda, too.
Another page of this that will be terminated.
What do you see yours? Yours are, like, you can forget it. So revised to read, what's this, number H? Where is it? The board of selectmen, okay, the board of selectmen shall appoint a town administrator who serves as the chief administrator of the town and provides support and guidance for the board of selection in the executive, something like that.
The execution of town business.
Okay. Okay, town's business and town's goals is what was added. Right, and then it was, it's got an extra Z there, we don't need. Okay? And the execution of town's is in town's goals, that's okay, right? Of course it is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, and this is okay, okay. And so then we have Davenport.
What I got here?
God help us.
We only got five, six things.
Well, except because, that's because it gives you a whole of this.
Well, that's nothing.
Nothing, okay. Add, the chair sets the meeting agenda, assures that meetings run smoothly and utilizes Robert's rules of order to assure order and consistency. That's nothing.
That's nothing.
So that's okay, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Change fourth, page 14.
I think we fixed that already, though, I think Bob's thing is good, that takes care of that, I think.
Okay, so wait, 14, we're saying what? Okay, we did that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Number three is the open meeting law. You said, I think.
I thought it was in the, that's not in the policy handbook?
It is in the policy. But you said to put in the, the, um, citation?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm going to call it?
Yeah.
I think that in a policy manual, it's the fewer citations you use, the better, because nobody reads them. When you say, chapter so-and-so, this is, I go, okay, whatever. So that's why I concluded in the back of this, rather than, rather than noting.
Right, okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because people can refer to it, it's easier when you refer to the guide, it's so simple. Okay, so this is okay to, to take that out, delete. And then town administrator page, oh, it just says, I think this is town manager or something, that's okay, done. But we changed it to, we added, the town administrator implements the selectmen's policies, coordinates municipal departments and administers, and administers the human resource program, okay? Okay?
Covers everything.
And then 26, conflict of interest, you, I think you said, do we need? Oh, it's a list of, it's a list of the conflict of interest issues. I would, I would agree that we probably don't need it, but on the other side of the coin.
25.
Is it 25?
No, it says 25, but that's not where it is.
Then maybe it's one before or one after. Well, I can look at the index because I have an index. It's a list, like bribery, which you might have thought we might, didn't need, but conflict of interest, 22.
Well, I think we took it out already, right?
Yeah, I took part of it out, but then, that's what, this is what I left, and, but it doesn't go into all the.
Well, that's different than what the employee policy is, every department has to sign.
So we take it out? That's why you're saying, do you need it?
Well, it's redundant on the, every other board has to.
So everybody has one in their policy, we don't need it in ours, is that what we're saying?
You don't want to get out of sync.
Yeah.
So we leave it in ours?
No, we take it out of ours.
We take it out of ours, because it's in the.
We're governed by the other one.
Take it out of this one.
Take it out of this, it's gone. Okay.
The emails we took it out.
Emails we took it out? Okay, then. The other ones, again, John had a lot of words, things that were easy to, um, to correct, but and for order of agenda, he said, should we incorporate backup data procedure? I didn't even know what you were talking about.
Well, well.
That's what it says.
I may have been late at night when I did that one.
I can't, what is he talking about?
Oh, no, what I'm talking about, what I'm talking about, should we have a proceed, should we have a procedure, like, for instance, if, if the police chief says, I wanna hire three guys, how does he get their resumes to us or their background or something like that? Or if we're discussing, uh, I don't know, the ambulance thing, how do we get to the board?
Well, what do we have, I mean, on the agenda preparation? Do we put it under the authority of the town district to prepare the agenda?
Yeah.
And then it should be right there, and all pertinent data for any agenda item shall be there.
Right, which is providing us.
Add to agenda.
Yeah.
All back, all.
Pertainent.
Info. Okay, so that's that one. Then the other one that he had was, um. Transfer from reserve funds, I said delete it, I did, I did delete it. That was, I just, okay. Well, this is the other conflict of interest.
That's my best, that's pretty good penmanship for me.
It is atrocious. It, I had to hold it to the light. What is he talking about? But we don't need this, because we're taking out conflict of interest. That was okay, okay. And then, the third one is, yeah, I've got three here. Should we put, all town business emails are subject to empty?
Okay, we took emails out, though, we took emails out.
All right, so that's it. We're almost at a done deal. On the back of this, it says something else. It says, policies should be written, comments and petitions, whether we should have a policy on comments and petitions, which is what we were talking about before, about the Zoom and who's doing what. And I think we should have a policy, but I wanted to reflect what you guys want.
Think about that, okay. So we got social media policy, that's in the.
This was a job, these are the ones, the ones below, vehicle uses, I had, I wrote down pending, because somebody sent it to me, but it really wasn't pending, I don't think. So that, I thought it was decided, because we voted it. But, um, we do need the comments and petitions. So.
That's our next project.
No, just tell me what you want, what you wanna say, and I'll write something up. How do we want the comments and petitions to be? Do we want them at the beginning, middle, and twice during the meeting, limited to once to a person, limited to topics that are on the agenda?
The point we made before is that if you have it at the beginning, it's almost like basically statements.
Right.
And, because they haven't really addressed anything that we just discussed. Could you have twenty minutes at the beginning and then twenty minutes at the end? That's quite possible.
Yeah.
Is it reasonable? I think so. Is that a hard vest number? No. What the beginning should be.
Do we want a time lim, do we want a time limit?
Yeah, you gotta have a time limit.
On the beginning one, the end one, you don't know. But I mean, discussions like we've been having lately could go on forever.
It certainly could. Two comments. Petitions.
And also, let's be realistic, this board is pretty good at allowing comment during.
Yeah, we do, we do. It's always, always has been.
Right, it's an opportunity for someone, hey, a couple of weeks ago, you talked about, uh, doing this road, could I touch on that right now, something like that?
All right, should I, should I say, um, during the meeting? Should I say, the public is encouraged to attend the Board of Selectmen meetings, and a brief twenty-minute portion, port, period will be allowed for comments and petitions at the beginning of the meeting, followed by a short period at the end of the meeting. Do you want twenty minutes at the end? We don't want twenty, we don't want forty minutes of comments.
Well, they get the discretion of the chair.
At the discretion of the chair. And then I would add, um.
You could also.
Comments during the meeting will be limited.
You could also encourage people to email their comments in ahead of time, which could be entered into the record.
As long as we're operating with Zoom, the whole chat section there, I think, is a way to collect.
Okay, so should we, um. So, so we don't need, is, because when we finish this, when we finish this COVID thing, are we gonna continue with Zoom?
I think we should.
I think it works great. I mean, I. We're getting better, but I think it's a good, yeah. The only thing I did, I did think was, um, the, um, having the, having those be the minutes online, I don't think is, is a good, is a good way to go, because it takes the person so long to listen to them. If they're just going to check for one thing, you know, I wanna know how they voted on.
Well, we had that discussion before, about how we make a summary of it, that software never really worked out.
So.
We checked back.
Not the written, you don't have written recently. But we don't have them, for almost all of them, you don't have them, because I looked up several, I looked up several this, just yesterday, and they were all just Zoom. And I said, I can't listen, go through this whole thing and wait till I figure out where the heck the thing is, you know, so, if we were, oh, no.
I think you're right, we need to make an effort to get more of the written ones done.
Well, the other way we could do it maybe is, if you put, if somebody was recording, where in the time was, on each agenda item, you could list the agenda item, Zoom, fifteen, one twenty-two, because it has been timed on that.
There is software that does that. In other words, when you do, if you wanted to look at the meeting, you bring up the agenda, click on the section that you wanna hear, it takes you right to it.
Right, exactly. So that may be something that would be easier to, to implement quicker, you know, because nobody wants to look at them. Either they're looking at them for reference, but if, or if they're gonna look for an hour and a half, they're gonna, you know, they're not gonna watch it back. Okay, so maybe we should look into that. Okay? That's it, we're done.
All right.
If I could ask the board to go to, not on, thank.
Go ahead.
We've had the flagpole discussion before, we're getting close on it, unfortunately, Mr. Grant is recovering from. A proposal to the board, we privately raised the money, we would like to make this flagpole in honor of John M. Ford, a plaque to that effect.
John M.?
Yeah.
Oh. John M. I was thinking it was Sheila.
No, there is actually nothing in town for my brother.
Really?
Yeah.
That doesn't seem right.
Well, yeah, so the family would like to do that.
And how many years was he a selectman?
Thirty-three.
My god. I think it's a fine idea, I don't have a problem with it.
Is your motion?
Or, or.
Well, just basically a lot of it, it's all privately paid for, but if you don't mind.
Yeah, no.
That's a good idea, we all support it.
I think that we, um, it should, it should put how long he served, or nice things about him. The plaque.
That'll be on page two.
Okay, I'm over that we, we.
You're okay with a page?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Installation of a plaque at the new flagpole.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't have it up, do we?
No, the flagpole's been delivered, but like I say, Joe Grant is recovering from surgery. So he's the Masons.
Town administrator report?
He was, Jasmine was a nice person, I say. Go ahead, give us your report.
Okay, well, I've added some, uh, some material since the one I sent to you on Saturday. We are officially open at Town Hall, we opened on the seventh. We had electrostatic sanitizing of the building on the eighth. Uh, I mentioned this before, but the high-touch surfaces, like door knobs and railings and so forth, are going to be sanitized every other day. Uh, and we have hired receptionists, uh, in preparation for the opening to the public on July the twentieth. Those who need to come to Town Hall will be encouraged to park in the parking lot and enter through the front door. There'll be a receptionist. We have plenty of plexiglass and, and precautions in the auditorium, and from there, the receptionist will either, um, call the department head, or put the individual on the phone with the department head, or in some cases, the department head will come up to the auditorium. So we will not have, we will not have the public coming through the building, and, uh, I think this is, this would be a lot safer for everybody.
And would Cory check the receptionist?
I think they, I don't think we need a new fob. Can she just borrow your fob instead?
Well, I really think she needs to.
Also, we, the new office is open up over here, if you haven't seen it, the treasurer has been relocated to there. Uh, we also have two workstations set up there, and the town clerk has relocated to the former treasurer's, uh, office. The assistant treasurer will operate from one of the workstations, uh, in that spare room there, and the other will be a utility workstation if, uh, selectmen or others need a computer. I know with the Chair of Conservation Commission, we spent some time, we have been unsuccessful in recruiting an assistant. She felt that, as I, as I did, that the people who have applied, we only had three. First of all, all live in the Boston area, uh, probably would not relocate for a very part-time position, and didn't really either, didn't have the credentials, or were overqualified. So we're out of luck.
So what's our plan of action?
Our plan of action is that I'm going to advertise it, this time on the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions. Uh, as I'll mention later on, we have a meeting in Wilbraham on the twenty-second to discuss regional cooperation.
On conservation or a whole bunch of conserv?
A whole bunch of things, including, uh.
We just Wilbraham?
Well, it just happened today. I had a call this afternoon from, uh, the administrator.
Yeah.
He had called me on Friday, I called him back, we were missing each other, and we finally connected today, and that's what it was about. There was an invitation to attend a meeting over there. That'll be, um, on the twenty-second, in the morning, at ten o'clock. And we'll discuss variety of opportunities to cooperate. One of them is going to be about the public health, since, uh, our public health agent is expected to retire next year. She serves, as you know, both Wilbraham and the Penn. We're looking at a, maybe a larger group of communities that would cooperate together to hire a replacement person. Uh, he also wants to continue the discussion that we started, uh, earlier this year about consolidated dispatch, and anything else that, uh, seems to be a sensible, uh, place for cooperation.
Are you looking this then to be a physical meeting, not a Zoom meeting?
It's gonna be a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
We've talked about a physical meeting, but it's.
Too early.
Probably not, not, not the thing. So it's gonna be Zoom, so I'll give you the code on that.
How does that work out now? Typically, you have your staff meeting Wednesday at ten.
Yes.
The week before, you're on vacation.
Yes. I'll have to arrange the staff for, uh, another time.
The other thing I would mention, just because it's brought to my head, was that the, um, Health Department, whatever it called, and I always say Board of Health, and you say, that's not it, but whatever the group is that we had our meeting today, and we interviewed our subcommittee, our Health, Subcommittee.
Board of Health Subcommittee.
Board of Health Subcommittee, Matt, um, and we had, we interviewed a person for the Public Health, um, position, at which, who was, that was a very positive experience. We have another interview set for Wednesday, we're gonna make the decision Wednesday, and we'll be bringing the person's name to you on next Monday, we hope. Um, I understand he only has to be, she only has to be, it only has to be appointed by the, um, town administrator, because it's only a part-time position, um, but, out of courtesy, we will.
We have a policy of bringing everybody who gets hired
Right, exactly.
Into town before the board to meet the board and be basically, uh. Okay, um. The, uh, I sent you an update, uh, from Boston O'Neill about the Summers Road project, they're still interested. I think, you know, it's a three to five-year project, but I really believe that it's in the best interest of the town. It'll be a much safer intersection, and, uh.
I, I know, because the guy sat here, he said, oh, that'll be four to five million dollars. You don't even know what we want yet. We haven't picked out the car, and you got the price for it.
A little disconcerting.
Well, and, and you don't know what he's proposing.
Right.
But he had the amount.
But you know how much he was gonna talk, but you didn't know how he was gonna make a village green out of it, or something.
And it just, it just, I think, you have two choices. You're either doing a four-way stop, or you're doing a street, a light. You know, and the problem, as I see it with the four-way stop, is training people. Because people are not, I didn't know that stop sign was there, it wasn't there last year or after. At least the light would give them a visual, oh my gosh, I'm gonna have to stop. If the choice is to do something, the other thing would be leave it alone and look at Main Street and Summers Road, which is just as bad. They need three to four years to do that? Seriously?
Well, I think.
We could buy four stop signs and put them in in a day, Don. But, the street light would take a little while.
Well, I don't like either the street light, or the street signs, or the, or the, what, the light, or any of that stuff. But I would like a creative idea. But I don't think there is a creative idea, is there? You can't do a roundabout, you can't do a roundabout. But something that would be pretty and nice and country.
A stoplight, a stoplight would add a little urbanization, which you don't want.
No, it doesn't, but the danger of the stop sign is, like I said, the people who are not used to, oh my gosh, and they're just not stopping. You know, because it's never been that way in a hundred years. And unless you have maybe some flashing ahead, and if you got the flashing stop sign ahead, you might as well have a stoplight. And I can't believe I'm saying this, because I've said this before, you know, if you check our Wikipedia page, I believe, we are one of the, what, the three communities without a numbered route? Or a stoplight? In Western Mass.
See, I keep thinking, there must be a way that you could just do a different road configuration. No, they might spend five million, we're gonna spend it for them.
Oh, like, take out the mini malls or something?
Yeah, do something, or, or do something at the corner, La Cachina, make it.
Davenport proposes removing the mini mall. News at eleven.
Go behind La Cachina and go out that way. I, I, you know, like, get a home decorator in here. They would what?
They, you'd have a preliminary plan, a twenty-five percent plan, um, in, in about six months. You'd have to approve going forward from that, or make adjustments to that.
I would tell them, this is not the right time, COVID is hitting us and we're concerned.
I mean, they're saying they'll do it for nothing, and seriously, and you've probably seen the same thing, that turning at Main Street and Summers Road.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
No, it is something that should be addressed. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it should not be addressed.
It's hazardous, because coming down East Long Meadow Road, you sort of bend this way, and you have to crane, crane your neck around.
Ah, so any neck crainers.
Look for traffic coming down, uh, Summers Road.
Obviously not cutting down Cedar Road like that real Tony would, but.
We're not doing it, we're not fixing it tonight, so.
The CR from Westbrook Two was approved by EEA, and will be presented to the Conservation Commission on July fifteenth. Minichalk is gonna hold the Conservation Initiative. I got this today from Mastock, uh, about the Shared Streets Initiative. Uh, as you can see, it looks like they're interested. We have to answer some additional questions, which will get done. Time Bond Sidewalks Project is taking longer than I think we expected, but they're twenty-five percent done, they've sent us a twenty-five percent bill. That's why we know that they're twenty-five percent done.
You were wondering how much they had done.
And of course, this is grant-funded.
Yeah.
I mentioned last week.
When you have nothing else to do, it might be nice if you, if you, um, put down all the grant money you've brought into this town.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think that would be impressive, if we could do a little, you know, a little feature or something.
Okay, uh, your, your, your focus, your priorities for the coming fiscal year are on the OneDrive under Focus. This is that list, that shortlist, uh, that was put together just recently. Uh, also, the duct work. Uh, the library, uh, employees have been concerned about.
Ducks?
The duct.
Yeah, we've got the AC up on the, uh, second floor.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, they don't know when the last time it was done, but they, they came to me today. I said, go out and, you know, find a firm to do it, so they came in, came with this firm. Uh, I talked with the, the owner of the firm. Looks like, uh, this is a go, and we can pay for this with, with COVID. Looks like this is a go, and we can pay for this with, with COVID money, so, and it needs to be done, so. That's basically it, and I, I've listed, I did not list the Board of Selectmen meeting, and I did not list here, because it came in late today, the, the meeting in Wilbraham.
I was informed last week that there's a Board of Selectmen Regional Meeting put on like MMA, or the MSA.
You sent to me.
Yeah. So that's next, this, this Wednesday at two o'clock.
Next week, we have people interested in the Hampton Wilbraham Regional School District.
Yes.
We only have, still only two applicants to interest.
Of course, I know. No others today. So. Yeah, that's, I have that for the agenda, you're actually going to make the appointment next on the Monday, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, because you're leaving.
Oh, we'll get this thing, we'll get it done.
No, I'm saying, look here, like, Bob's leaving the fourteenth to the sixteenth, like.
They were doing this the twentieth.
Yes.
Yeah.
And they found out who owns the buildings for the towers. There was some confusion about who had the, who had the, the two, the two, they want to put the emergency communication system hardware, whatever you want to call it, in these two buildings. And no one seemed to know who owned the building.
They've been researching it in great depth.
But they've got it.
For three years.
They've got it. They've got it. Thanks to Rose, I have to say, Rose Crowley did a nice job of tracking them down and getting everyone on the same page, so they're gonna, so, it's, the equipment can fit in there, and now they're just gonna have to draw a plan, is that it? Configuration where it's gonna go, and then we'll be able to move forward.
The dock in the tower next to the, at the dock?
Yeah.
They didn't know?
No. Verizon denied that they owned it. Which is another one. Thirty-three Commercial Drive.
And then today, yeah, thirty, so, I don't know, I've never heard those.